Let's be thorough. Roll call, please.
Augustin Chapman.
Present.
Um, Cunningham.
Here.
August Wilson.
Present.
Up New Hope.
Present.
James. Augustin Chesney.
Here.
Auguston Leonard.
Here.
Thank you. We have Jim in front of us. Need to make a couple of adjustments. Uh, we're removing uh, the on the presentation on the park and recreation, Rupert City Lead Track Club. There will be presented at another meeting. I'd like to amend the wording. Consider General Item four point three. Like to move consent item four sixteen to the main agenda. Add sin agenda item four two seven. First of all, minutes. We want to add consent agenda item four two eight. Approved decline of fence for lift stations. And by Clearwater. Want to add to the main agenda. Item five point two. Is there any other item? Board members, you wish to move from consent agenda to the main agenda? The doctor.
Want to approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
Have been most of our department chaplain, second modern Cunningham to accept the amendment agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. Autumn Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I take great pleasure in presenting our guest pastor for tonight. He has been with us before as the newly installed pastor at Meridian Street Baptist Church, and I invited him again tonight. He's a personal friend of mine. We basically grew up together, went to school and graduated uh, together. And uh, he is the former councilman for the city of Pascagoula, award one. And uh, has served uh, notably for the city, and he he answered a higher calling, Mr. Mayor, to become pastor. And I still, I still call him the governor pro temp for the state of Mississippi. Uh, because uh, he he's a politician at heart, but he he uh, he's also an outstanding member. And mayor has has asked that we join together, he and I, and and along with the mayor, do a series of community or municipal government information for the public. So you'll be hearing more about that from he and myself in the future. But please join me in welcoming Pastor Willie Jones from Meridian Street Baptist Church, March one.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, last new business. Autumn shield. Listen. In a straightened ball point. To sit here. Would you want me in a word of prayer? Our Lord, our God, Father, Hyma, we read you. God of peace, God of grace, God of goodness. You come here in this place, this point in time now. We ask for your guidance, your direction. For day of night. And these all that we would do was given in your sight for the citizens here, Mars form. But living down a difficult time. Everywhere we turn, there's trouble, there's some kind of trouble, whether it's fire, hurricane, earthquake, but oh God, I don't know where we are, that will be shared. We just pray for you. We need your help tonight. There's every heart, every mind that's standing up, that's sitting high. But then we're here tonight for the members of this great city that you have given them. We bless your name. We lift you high. And Jesus, man, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand for the pledge.
Okay. Little bit of wire. That they have to say it's from there. It's simple, their father. His choice. My God. Invisible. They're seeing justice for all.
Thank you very much. We enter our agenda now on the presentation. Uh, we have uh, Ms. Wendy Johnson. Who is the River Recycling Director of Compliance. That will go forward. Would you come?
My name is Wendy Johnson. I'm with River Recycling, and first I'd like to say thank you for letting us present tonight. Especially. Uh, so uh, I'm gonna let him say most of everything. This is Andres Butler. Uh, we work with uh, making sure everyone's compliant with cycling and fluorescent bulbs, uh, immediately. Uh, the benefits of LED adoption, uh, cost savings and health benefits and just helping protect the environment. So I'm gonna leave it up to Andres for the rest of the three minutes.
Great, thank you. Um, so basically, uh, one of the most over the business that's going right now in large scale voids of compliance is people are adopting LEDs and they don't know what to do with the lamps. Um, and uh, through the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, um, any entity that large quantity generator, such as school districts, municipalities, heavy industries, um, they can be subject to a fine of about twenty-five thousand dollars per day for offense for violating that. Now, us as a resource-rich area, you know, we already care about the environment, and a lot of times it's just, we just need to know what our what our products are. In Mississippi, we didn't have a recycling company that was aided to itself with the help of Ms. Johnson. We created a recycling company to help uh, protect protect our resources, to make sure that we were doing the right thing long term. And like y'all, we're just talking about doing these sort of uh, uh, city ministries to help the public out. Um, it's same is true with uh, with lighting. In fact, uh, proper lighting creates a much less stress stressful environment, especially for the youth. Um, and also each fixture in a school, for example, the fluorescent fixtures, the four-foot tubes um, can save the school uh, over twenty-five dollars per fixture per year in energy saving. Uh, so it's actually a budget-friendly thing. It's something that's already in the budget that can be generating money for the community, for the school district, as well as creating a healthy environment. Uh, where students can see, where, you know, people can can actually do their job a lot better. And then when I talk about lighting with people, I use use the comparison, how do you feel on a sunny day versus how do you feel on a cloudy day? And that is true in a school environment. You're trying to, you're trying to learn, if you're trying to focus, if you're trying to read and you can't really see, or uh, you can't see the board clearly and things like that, that definitely affects you, it affects uh, your ability uh, how how awake you are. I mean, if you're tired, it's dark. Um, there's a few lights that are out. Um, it's a problem for students, and it's something that, um, you know, if you get a little bit behind in the classroom, it can lead you a little bit behind in life. So that's what we're really trying to do, is just to inform you guys on uh, not only the benefits of saving with uh, LED for the city, but also how to make sure that client, when we're doing it, because it's not a matter of if it comes to LEDs, it's a matter of when. It really is the true green technology that's proven to be effective and cost savings. So uh, we just want to make sure that everybody's aware of how to do it, the importance of doing it right, and what the benefits can be, uh, as quickly as possible. Uh, and that's that's pretty much it. I can leave you guys with some more information. Uh, we created a website, um, lightdiscos.org that is free, is is uh, just informational purposes, um, so that everyone can find out different ways they can recycle. And then, of course, through my company, um, we work with school districts, we have four from in here in South Mississippi, to make sure that y'all can get the get the lights that you need, get the proper lighting. Because that's another thing, is people aren't really um, as aware of the pollution side of lights as well, like you can have flare, you could put stuff up that makes part of people driving to a parking lot, park for football games or for baseball games. People of, you know, put the lights like this, you can actually have the lights this way, and the uh, lenses can actually project the light in different ways, so you don't have glare, so you don't have that environmental pollution uh, or light pollution. That. That's all I really got for you guys.
Did you have any kind of handout, anything you could leave with us?
Yeah, sure. I have uh, I have some stuff I can leave with you guys, or you'll leave it over there.
I'm with you.
I'll leave it with you. Thank you for your.
The board run the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is your recycling just for the lights only?
Right now it is. Um, we're looking at getting into batteries, and we're trying to partner with larger facilities, pretty much start up here in Mississippi doing it. So the biggest need, we've just noticed that so many contractors are not taking that extra step, you know, and doing it right. And the availability and the information hasn't been out there, so that's. Thank y'all.
Yeah, Wendy, thank you for coming.
Um, our next presenter is with uh, engineering firm Neil Taker and uh, Dave Bergen, he's uh, here to give us some options. So this is part of our downtown development. And we started with the traffic study once we cleared the property. We're now beginning with the traffic study, and what he's gonna give us tonight is some of the findings that they have from the from the traffic study. Given us a couple of options, so what we can look forward to. We're at the beginning of this process. So we just want to keep us informed as we go through this process. So this is the beginning of this, this is the first presentation. We have us, we'll have some other information later as we go. So, Jay.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Uh, thank y'all for letting me be here tonight. Um, I'm gonna try to uh, keep it kind of uh, I guess, might get down into the weeds, but kind of go through a quick overview of what we did to get to where we are. And so um, first thing that we did when we got started, wanted to count all the traffic in the downtown areas. We counted, we counted six thirteen from Dancler down to Bellevue. Plus, we also picked up McInnes and Morse, so that we could figure out, you know, the traffic patterns in the area, how much traffic there actually is today. And so the map down on the screen is just the locations of those counts. Uh, the counts are presented in the circles, which is too small for you to see, but that's uh, photos in the report. We ran the analysis on these to determine the levels of service. We did that approach, um, just on historic traffic volumes in the area to figure out how much to grow traffic in the future, so that we could look at twenty thirty-four and twenty forty-four, just ten and twenty years into the future, with and without the developments. And then we were presented with a uh, preliminary development plan for downtown. Um, that some of it, you know, it's not what the final is, but it gives an idea of what could be built, um, you know, out here in front. And a lot of it is multi-story buildings with residential up top, commercial on the bottom. And so, you know, how much traffic does this, would this generate if it was to be built out? And that was really part of the study. And so once we were able to get this, we did some uh, trip generation on the um, on the numbers. And those are really small, too. And so what we looked at was, you know, we assumed obviously the upper floors would be more like multifamily, because it wouldn't be single-family homes, the residential. So that would include condos, townhomes, you know, whatever it ends up being. We also looked at uh, some of the space being small office space. Uh, apparel store, which is, you know, retail. Um, we looked at a high turnover, sit-down restaurant. They could, they could be a restaurant, even like a walk-up coffee shop. Now, because coffee shops obviously generate a bit of traffic in the mornings and really throughout the day. And so once we got these numbers, we put them all in. And came up with total numbers of traffic uh, for twenty thirty-four, this is the twenty forty-four numbers. And one of the things I wanted to point out was, part of the study with the development was um, the removal, so the removal, but as a McInnes not go all the way to six thirteen, that the main road would actually push up and line up with Post Office Avenue, so that you'd have a nice thoroughfare through there. And so part of this, too, shifting that traffic that's on McInnes up. And um, you know, we know that McInnes is a Mississippi DOT highway, that's actually sixteen, which I did not know until just a few weeks ago, found it on back. Um, and we would recommend, you know, moving that designation over to the new roadway. And so once we did this, you know, one of the keys is what would be the point of one of three, which is that new intersection, what would that new intersection, six thirteen, what? And so I did some um, with the trip generation and looking at future traffic, it would warrant a traffic signal in the future. And so, you know, if, you know, if a traffic signal was to go in, that you would definitely need left-turn lanes coming out of the site. Uh, we would line up with Post Office Avenue, and that's just some of the, you know, street network that would come in. And we looked at the level of service of this, you know, this uh, signal. And while it operates well, you know, traffic signals do tend to uh, increase accidents, especially rear ends, that that's always been one of the issues, traffic signals. And so, you know, another option that we are looking at is a roundabout. And so roundabout at this location would need to be a dual lane roundabout to go carry the traffic so on to uh, six thirteen. You know, the benefits of a roundabout are to slow traffic down as it comes into the city, because they're fourth, slow down, safer, and then you could almost make it also uh, kind of a landmark into the city to come in, you know, but you can do something in the islands. Um, you know, one of the sort of drawbacks is, is it would take away a little bit of the development area. Uh, now we're looking into this to see if we can, see if we can tweak the roundabout to make it smaller, uh, just to see how much property would actually be affecting with it. But then the um, you know, the last piece is looking at how McInnes comes in now. And then all the traffic would end up having to come up if you're going from uh, east to west, or turn right on to Morse, and left on the Post Office, or whatever the new name of the roadway is to get to six thirteen. But there's also a possibility that McInnes over, you know, in the future. Um, but this one shows a in white line uh, going up through this uh, you know, railroad property and then tying into uh, the new roadway, so that there is a new, there is still a continued through thoroughfare between six thirteen and sixty-three, so the cars don't have to turn. And so those are really the main options that we're we're looking at, and we're gonna come back to, you know, with uh, the detail of especially the intersection of new proposed intersection six thirteen.
Your question.
I had one quick one. I I would just uh, I like the idea of the roundabout, it's been talked about a lot. Uh, a couple of other options that may be thought, maybe considered would be uh, moving a roundabout down to Dancler, where that intersection is. And going ahead with what you said with the traffic light here, and only say that because, and I'm not against this, I just want to throw out this idea. One of the things we've talked about is a need to make this area more pedestrian-friendly. While a roundabout does help slow down the traffic, I agree, it does serve a good purpose, and it'd be attractive. Uh, I think a a regular traffic light with crosswalks, you know, would would be safer for pedestrians crossing Main Street. So just something to keep in mind, that's all.
Yeah, and you could, and they make these, and they're, you know, they're not shown there to where you end up with two-stage crossings at the roundabout.
And that would be something I'd I'd be interested in seeing. It's just that the really idea of a roundabout is that traffic never, never really has to stop, it's always moving. And I know if you had a light with crosswalks, you could actually stop traffic, let people walk back and forth. You you could control it a little better, but not not to say that's not a good idea, I just wanted to make sure we we thoroughly look at both both options.
Do you, do you, do you think roundabouts is more safer than a bit like?
They are. And the reason is, is most of the uh, you know, it's shown uh, through all the research and all that uh, traffic signals greatly increase rear-end collisions, because people stop it or look one behind and don't, and then you have people that run the red lights. And so that's the real dangerous crashes, or your your uh, left turn angle crashes, somebody running red light and getting teed. And with a roundabout, the islands and all are forcing everybody to come into the roundabout at an angle. And so if you do have crashes or low speed, and they tend to be property-only crashes. It's not to say that you're not gonna have some crazy person out there that.
Well, that's why I asked, because uh, I know that roundabout on that, that's all over here. Man, there's some crashes.
Twitter.
It, yeah, it is. It's horrible. And uh, like you say, now, you know, some people could drive crazy and stuff, but I never, I never could just really tell who's had a right of way and who don't.
It's always, you know, that's, if if we're to put one in, it's definitely want to do like a public information campaign that you can put out of uh, video and stuff, of who's got the right way. But I mean, it's always, it's always who's in this, who's in the circle. You know, who's in the circle has the rights.
Yeah, that's right. I I just question it, man, because I don't really careful.
Well, they're, they're becoming more and more popular. I mean, you're saying um, you know, Mississippi hasn't gotten there, but there's some states out there that are actually, you have to put, you have to prove that roundabouts doesn't work until they let you put in traffic.
You have to prove to me. How involved was DOT with the study, or were they?
They have not been that involved yet. Uh, no, they, there's been some conversation with them on what's what we're looking at. But um, obviously, anything that comes up at the beginning is gone to them and permitted. And yeah, hopefully get them on board, break them some.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, just know for the public, uh, what we're trying to do is we know as we develop businesses downtown, we've got to do something to manage the traffic. And this is all about how do we manage the traffic that's gonna be most effective for what we're trying to accomplish with businesses downtown and more pedestrians walking downtown. So this study is the beginning of that process. We know we're gonna develop downtown. So how do we manage the traffic to keep people safe? And so that's what this is all about. So saying thank you for your work, and uh, we'll be, I'm sure, see more of you. More ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, without you uh, public comments. And what I would like for you to do, and we'll call your name, is to repeat your name again, and tell us who you the authority is, as well as your address, so that the government would know they represent you based on your address. Mr. Samuel Wester.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and members of the board. Uh, I reach you and appreciate the opportunity to share my complaint with you all that I have made for the last couple of years. And they're only someone who have actually been put forth any efforts to support me in that way, it's Mr. Dubow there.
Is he your orderman? Is he your orderman? Yes, Mr. Dubow is your orderman?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And uh, it's, it's basically my property. But with East Mars Point from Main Street, huh, it's going to grow. And the problem is, is an overgrowth of foliage to the naval property. In other words, one neighbor is not respecting the other naval property. And it gets to the point, he let at the property line uh, the growth just continue without even doing anything with it, okay? And I found out just recently, it's a big fire hazard. And I think in the long run, it will affect your uh, it it will not only affect my property, but it will affect all the more explaining, all of that. There are four pieces of property that, adjourned from my properties that it can if a fire break out, and I learned this the hard way. Uh, a lady came from Mobile and told me that I had a fire in the back. Okay? And the fire has spread within one foot of this foliage. And during the wintertime, if you do not take care of your property line, all the foliage that that leaves and stuff that fall, it creates a fire hazard. It doesn't necessarily have to be your fire hazard, you you causing it, or you causing it. Even lightning can cause it, okay? Now, with my particular property, it would affect it for the houses and Mr. Parker uh, and Parker there, uh, and uh, property on okay, that connects with Second Street. Okay? So I have talked to enough peoples about it to have the honor to do something about it. And I submitted pictures to Mr. Dubow showing how the growth is now and what it will be like next year. Uh, and uh, I've talked to, I think, everybody uh, dealing with the uh, cordyceps. And he's the only one that has given me any recognition concerning this. And it is a serious problem with me, and it's going to affect it the other neighbors as well. Now, all the material that you need from me, pitches and et cetera, I think uh, the inspector has it in his office. Okay?
Okay.
And I thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. West, for coming.
What is this address, Mr. Mayor? What?
Like what?
Your dress?
My address is forty-three oh six West Street. And the owner of the property, that's all the dollars. It's his property is on the corner of Bay and Pine Street. And uh, his name, last name is Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Tom Williams.
Good evening. My name's Tom Williams. Uh, thirty-eight zero one, River River. I'm here tonight speaking for General Welch.
Who's your orderman? Who's who represents? Who are you?
I am.
Your orderman, yeah, who's the?
I am, ma'am, ma'am.
Please.
Yeah, she's out of town, so I do live at the residence with General. Would just ask if there's some uh, reconsideration for privacy business to uh, hear our pool, it has been approved.
Well, is this, is this by the gentleman gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good.
Uh, there is no backyard that gets residents into the way it's positioned on the lot. So we've got approval to put a pool in, it's kind of on the side of the house. I'm asking for variance to go with the fence, the privacy fence in the front of the house, which would be still fifty feet from the road. So we'll put some pictures together, kind of showing where the pool and American fence would be. And uh, there are no neighbors. Be plenty car from River Road, but indeed any traffic safety issues. Uh, it's just basically asking for some reconsideration of variance. Right. Privacy is far. Right. Basically.
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss this, I moved that down to to the main agenda, so we will discuss that in a moment. The thing for me to do, to discuss.
Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Jolene Johnson.
Julie Johnson with Waitrow, our address locally is forty-two oh five, Beasley Road. And I just wanted to.
Then your orderman.
Sorry.
Your orderman. Who's your orderman?
I'm at the lost point. I I don't live in Lost Point, I'm representative of Waitrow.
Oh, okay, you was from, oh, okay.
I just wanted to make a few statements about topic, uh, agenda item number five point one. About solid waste services, would I do that now, or during the discussion of that topic? About solid waste services. Would I do that now or during the discussion of that topic?
Uh, for our woman.
On the main agenda.
Main agenda.
It's regarding solid waste here in local.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, no, we, well, we're gonna discuss it on the agenda in a moment.
Okay, but would I get, be given the opportunity to speak then?
Yeah, you can, yeah, no, no, you do now.
I just want to say that uh, we have enjoyed being a partner with the city and providing the solid waste services for the past few years. And um, I just wanted to say that. We understand completely that the city is looking for a more economical solution for the residents and we uh. Would like to have been a part of being able to sit down as true partners with the city and entertain that and so forth solution along with the city. Uh, we, we're not given the opportunity to submit a competitive bid for those services. And um, I just want to say that we welcome the opportunity to be able to sit down with the city and do that if that's the city's desire. And I know this isn't a question and answer portion, but um, when you're discussing that, please just let us know. What entity is providing which service because you have garbage and bulk, just kind of want to know what's going on with that.
Is this uh, I may got the first name Butter, U T T R? That Andrew, Andy's bitter or butter?
Oh, I see. Is that you?
Oh, okay. Oh, you already been here.
I'm here today.
All right, sorry about that. All right. All right, thank you all for your comments. Uh. Other discussion we're gonna have, Mr. Webster, about this representation at the end of our meeting as well. So we'll have some more discussion about this uh, this property that you're talking about, not that particular property, but just property overall in our city. So uh, hopefully you get some out of that from you, when you hear that discussion. Thank you all for your comments. Uh, without you, your concern to items. Get a motion to accept. Considered an item four point one. Four point uh. Twenty six.
Motion to accept. Second.
On a favor to accept item number, consider an item four point one through twenty six, knowing that we moved. Was sixteen to the main agenda. On a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have it. Down to the main agenda. And it is uh, item five point one. Uh, that is to. Apply the local interlocal corporate, uh, corporation agreement. Uh, between the city of Moss Point and the Jackson County, Jackson County, Mississippi. The solid waste contract is submitted by the mayor. And that's what Mr. Jolene was here addressing. So any other comments about that? We've uh. Board has agreed overall in the meeting to go into this agreement. So is there any comments based from what, from what?
Mayor, I just, I I would just like to make sure that we clarify. Um, I guess through legal, I know we've done this before, approve something pending legal review. Unless you already know, because I I don't know, but uh, it says here that that. The city has requested to opt in to receive the following services. Uh. Garbage service and rubbish. And I, I recall the county is supplying the rubbish service in that, is that correct? For the county customers. But I'm not sure that our opting in to their contract would would mean that we would also be provided that service. So I just would like to have that clarified. That's all. Because it does say that we would be, we would receive rubbish. I think the county is doing their own. Is is that the same as bulk, the rubbish? It says right here rubbish on the uh, it's the, it's the next and the last line before the agreement, Randy, if you will. Because whereas the city has in, has requested to receive the following services, curbside, ninety six gallon garbage service and rubbish. Two monthly collection goes on. Would would the rubbish service come from the county to us or would we need to? What I'm saying is I think the county was gonna take rubbish in-house and contract the garbage out. That makes sense. So if they do that, would they extend that service to the city?
It's my understanding that the same agreement we've had in the past is for this service we're gonna get would be the same. Nothing is changing.
Um. Well, I just.
That's I'm, I'm not, that's I'm not understanding your question.
I just, I remember back during the discussions of the county contract. That they were going to take their, I thought they said rubbish, but it may have been bulk. Did you mention, you mentioned bulk or something? Part of the service, like like now with Waste Pro, we have rubbish, we have garbage. We have bulky waste, they'll pick up a refrigerator off the side of the road. I remember the supervisor saying they were going to take that portion in-house and the county was gonna provide that to their customers. So the contract was for garbage. I don't know if the county can extend that same service to the city. Since that's not part of the waste management contract.
I have, I have not been a part of any of those discussions about any separation like that.
That's the only question is to maybe to get that clarified. Maybe maybe approve this pending that clarification.
Uh, we have shade. Like saying.
Right.
Um, we have to do.
When the county put out their RFP back in the spring, uh, they, they are doing their own rubbish. Within the county, but it within that RFP, they forced that all vendors that were applying for it to give a price. If they were, if a city were to opt in and needed rubbish itself. So we had, we're forced to give a price, what that would cost. So under this agreement, if we were to move into the city, we would do your, your garbage and your rubbish. Prepare for that. Uh, the county would still continue to do theirs. If they were to change down the road, then they could come in, but that, those options were listed in the RFP. All line item, different levels of service, you know, once a week, twice a month, once a month, that service.
So you've already provided a price to provide that.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the proposal sent to the county originally. All of the vendors and so I would accept it with those listed prices.
So I guess that just means the county would, the the price we've end up paying the county would be. So we'd just have that added to it.
The price that would be, it'd be added to your, you mentioned your, your solid waste, your residential trash or your rubbish service.
So that's just something to keep in mind, Mayor, that the the price that the county is quoting. Or that the county shows for garbage service does not include rubbish. We would have to have that added to whatever we pay.
That's correct.
We understand.
It's kind of, it's kind of like the the recycling, right? So the county has residential recycling, curbside recycling, whereas the city is up and up out of that. From what I understand. And so with that, so it's just like a polling card, basically. Everything's listed, you pick and choose what you want, what what services you need based upon those service levels listed in RFP.
So there would be no need to to be an union out again.
Yeah.
The trash. Okay, I think that was the question.
Yes.
Uh, it, it, will the trash trucks run the same schedule?
Um, so that would be evaluated from out, we would look at what is currently being done, how we, how we look at it. There might have to be some changes. If there were, that would be sent out to all the residents via postcard, via notifications. But if there's a more, if we thought there's a more efficient way, better way to do things, we would bring it to the city for approval. We all have to approve that. But that would be something that we would be evaluating.
So the way is uh. Trash trucks is not included in what you're gonna be doing based waste for?
Yes. Yeah, your, your residential trash, your curbside trash bring out to the street and and addition with the uh, bulk. Rubbish.
Oh, yeah, because I thought you were saying that. We wouldn't have a trash truck run.
Yeah, the trash truck would run just like your normal search.
That's all good.
Yeah, yeah, it'll run your normal, it'll run your normal search. Now the days, that would be all looked at from internally with us, just to see, hey, okay. For this, they're doing these routes on this day. Do we think that makes sense or do we think this would make a lot more sense doing it this way? Now, we'd have to say that to you. And let you approve it, but that that's going to be evaluated and is being evaluated.
I I think to clarify, bottom of my chest that. The the rubbish truck or the bulky waste truck would not run unless we opt into that option.
Well, yeah.
I would say.
Yeah, if you don't want it, there's no truck, rubbish truck running. But if you do want it, two times a month, we would have a schedule for that. It's, we submit that to the city to evaluate.
Okay, thank you.
You know what? No, the question. So what was, so what was your?
My Jolly.
Yeah, but I wanted you to address whether, when she was like some concern, I don't know, was already trying to even get into this back and forth like this, but.
Just as a point of clarity, I just wanted to make sure, because I have the bid in part of the vendor contract. And where it says rubbish collection, it says no bid. So that's what I was looking for is where was that provided? Because it was not provided in the, in the initial proposal and that's why I was looking for clarification on that.
Okay. Okay, so in the initial art creation process with the county, there was initially a no bid from us on the, on the rubbish side. After negotiations which went on the lines, uh, we provided them a, a price to the city, I mean, to the county for rubbish for different service levels. And so that is, that is provided to the county, they have the rates. That's, that's what y'all will be responding, you know, responsible for on top of your regular trash.
And a question, I'm kind of confused here. You, you keep saying you provided this to the county, but it's for rubbish?
We, we, we don't do the rubbish for.
Okay.
The county doesn't themselves. If city, with the way the RFP was written and allowed within the first two years for cities to join into the county RFP under their term, right? Uh, and if a, if a city were to accept that RFP from, can move under those terms of their contract. We, we could opt, they could opt in like you're opting out of the recycling, but you're opting into the rubbish. So we would be, we would provide the rubbish service at X. But yeah, we, we, we can do it. We're just not doing it for the county currently because they're doing it themselves.
Did, did your price go up when you added the rubbish?
So we, each, each item on its Murphy is a line item. So you have a line item for your residential trash. You have a line item for your recycling and all of that, and your rubbish, different service levels. So our rates are in there with those service level rates uh, for your rubbish. So you, so to get your final rate, I think it's kind of what you're looking for here. You'd have your residential trash and addition would be your rubbish service.
But your original no bid didn't include that.
That's correct. Well, there, the original.
That's why they thought it was.
The patients did not, did not include that for anything assigned or decided.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I need to know.
I would recommend that you get a, a term again on that because when the, when according to specific current guidelines, when, once you make a no bid, then that's off the table. So changing that later and after the fact, I don't think, well, it's the guidelines, but I would recommend as your current provider and a partner of the city that you please get in turn channels, you know.
Mr. Mayor, it's something Amy, Amy and I can handle and we'll talk to Mr. Compton uh, with the county. We'll make sure that I suppose he's across on with counties done in the future. So that won't be a problem. As far as interlocal agreement, do you know if county's adopted the interlocal agreement yet? Okay. Because ultimately the attorney general will have to approve that, but but we'll check your question now and I'll give you, I'll give you, uh. I'll give her probably the day after tomorrow, but I'm. And we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that that things are in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to table pending the attorney's review.
What, 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 Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to suggest if?
Give us some direction, yes.
Yes, you know, you could, uh, as you had mentioned earlier, approve it subject to legal review. As opposed to table it and and then that way if legal review comes back and she's correct, then then we'll bring it back before the board. Uh, that's one option for you.
All right, thank you.
I assume at some point prior to me being in this chair, there, there was a process that y'all went through to get to this point. And uh, in this point tonight, as you're, you're essentially asked to, to endorse and approve the interlocal agreement. Which includes the residential pickup and the possibility of opting in for the rubbish. And uh, so that's where we are. In terms of her question is, is whether or not. When there was not a bid, can that be negotiated in a contract with a bidder? And and so that's the question that we will get you some legal guidance on. So at this point, uh, I don't know when y'all meet again. I don't, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for the county. If the county has approved it. If you want to table the next minute meeting, you can do that as well. It's really your decision. I'm not sure what the time constraint is and I apologize for that.
I guess, Mayor, that the, in, in, in the interest of time, if, if you, if you approve pending legal review, then if the, if there is no legal issue, you can move forward. If there is a legal issue, they'll bring it back to us. So that may be your more expedient way to handle it.
So.
Same as David.
So, so Almond Chapman, did you make a motion on that to table it?
Yeah. You did. We, we still here, we, we didn't get a second on it.
I can, I can rescind that and uh, adjust it based on the attorney's.
Would you restate it?
Uh, 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 make a motion that we approve pending our legal guidance.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a motion of orderman Chapman that we kept in the local agreement to count it pending the legal review. That was seconded by. On discussion. Any other question? On a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ace. I just have it. Item number two. And so. Approve or decline the memorandum of understanding between. The Firehouse Top Public Safety Foundation and the City of Moss Point, for the Moss Point Fire Department. Six thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. Be used towards the direct purchase of a variety of hoses and nozzles. Committed by Chief Davis. Move. Move, Almond Chapman, circle from, in a discussion. Say, say aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Item, main agenda item five point three. Which was four sixteen. The agenda. This is the variance that. Mr. Williams was here, well. Bottom line.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the variance. For the finance.
Bottom, I made a motion that we approve the variances that was uh. Mr. Williams is requesting. Uh, there a second?
I second.
Second, bottom one. Same. Any questions?
Question denied by the commission.
What's it?
Denied by the panel commission, Mr. Yeah, Mr. Ketchum, I get some clarity on that. I.
It seemed like it would make sense. Uh, primary reasons for the ordinance, uh, provision of height of fence. Ask the kind of location in the house. It's typically in a negative setting. You don't want to block, you can around corners and block you. Your neighbor back down their driveway or back on your driveway. Oncoming traffic. So that's the reason why the tent has to go three foot from yard. Um, in particular situation, the house sits seventy or seventy feet off the road, close to a hundred feet off the road. So the fence that's closest point is only going to be fifty, they're still going to be fifty feet off the road. Um, also, they got to prove, they did approve that. Um, they don't have a backyard, backyard clearly demolished. They did approve the variance to have the pool inside of, was asking to have a normal like, eight foot crossing. So anyway, that, that's, I'm not sure why it was denied, but the panel commission did deny.
Mayor, I'll just offer some more clarity if I could. I went by and visited and Mr. Williams walked me around the site. We looked at it. I did see that the fence would be fifty feet from the road.
We looked at it, I did see that the fence would be fifty feet from the road of. And I'll, I will note that the planning commission was not unanimous in denying it, it was a split vote. But I, from what I observed, just walking there, it would be no, it should, it should cause no problem for any neighbors or any, it would give them the privacy from the passing traffic for their pool. And this picture that he brought is actually better, I think, than what, that was, than what we previously had. It, you can see the blue circle there in the brown line being the fence. Uh, and then you can also see uh. That there is basically no, no backyard, so that this is the only option for them to put the pool. So I, I just, I, I agree and it's in more six, it is right at the line with quarter five and I asked Almond Chastain to look it over, he was. In agreement that he well approves it, so uh, I, I, I would appreciate y'all's support.
We have a, have a motion.
I, I'll make this. I'll add on to what a young man is trying to. Because I have a pool. And uh, I know where you're going, he's going with that. Because twenty years ago, I wish I wouldn't have done it. Because that privacy fence, it's, it plays a big part in safety, especially with kids. By him having a privacy fence. Kids won't see that pool, so he don't have to patrol that pool like he would, just sitting out there wide open. And, and I also know. From, from, from insurance purposes. They are even better with you on your insurance with that privacy fence. And plus two, that's your privacy, you, you want that. And uh, I wish I'd have done it twenty years ago, you know, with that uh, privacy fence, so I. I'm agreeing with you, I, I, I'm for it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a question, discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please, I just have it.
Thank y'all.
Motion passed. Uh, down to the discussion. And uh, Almond Cunningham. Requested this view in this discussion item and I'm sure you have some particular area in mind. Tried into what uh, Mr. Webb is talking about.
Yes, addressing our grass ordinance code. It only addresses the height of grass in somebody's lawn or yard. It does not address the fields, lots in particular. So then when you ask Marcus now about going and addressing the situation, then they can't go because of the fact that their ordinance does. Any effort that they would try. So we need to address the ordinance that will address the vacant lots and properties, all, not just in my world, but all throughout the city. That we can be able to be in compliance with uh, the kind of thing what he's talking about in safety and all of those particular. So at some point, we need to go back and go beyond just what somebody's front yard, ten inches of grass height need to be to dealing with these vacant properties.
Question, any other comments on that? Yeah, and, and, and I'll give you a, kind of city perspective on where we are with it, but while building officials, so.
Just uh, from the county standpoint, what we do in the county, it's just like the city of Moss Point, like uh, all Cunningham said, it's somebody's lawn. So if you have a structure or residence on a piece of property, that ordinance would refer to your lawn, ten inches. If it's a vacant piece of property, we, not really anything you can do about that. Uh, and we don't push that county, of course, we have a lot more rural areas in the county than we do the city of Moss Point. But do you want to open that can of worms? Because you do have a lot of lots in the city of Moss Point that are wooded lots, you know, and. With masses of people cleaning their lots up, you know, or that's the type of thing that I'm talking about. Uh, Mr. Webster's, it's a different story, you know, we've found his problems several times, you can't see it from the street. He wants you to come into his backyard and stand and look at it, property behind his house where trees are hanging over in his yard. We told him, cut the trees, you know, it's not anything important standpoint we can do. Uh, so I mean, it's just different scenarios. Does the city want to, to, to basically open a can of worms dealing with vacant lots? And if you want to, of course, we will, but then they're vacant lots, then we get to the point where. Is somebody going to clean it up? Do we take them to court? If they don't clean it up, we're going to put them on a menace list. We've already got two years of menace is backed up right now, so it's going to be two years or more before we get those lots from them. So I mean, that's up to you guys how you can handle that, but we have more ministers now that we can do in the city. So are we going to add all these lots to those ministers too?
And ask a question.
Yeah.
You, you say just that refers to only, refers to only our people's lawn?
It.
And only, only the lawn?
What refers to yards that have structure? They have residential structure on the yard. We can cite those people, if it's a vacant piece of property and nobody's living on it, it's not something that we cite.
You can't contact the people that own the property because nobody owns it.
We mentioned that, we, we, I actually met with the mayor the other day, you know, because I know this is, this is an issue. People, you know, uh, have called and uh, you know, we offered to send them a courtesy letter. But we'll be glad to do that, we can draft up a courtesy letter to let people know, hey, you need to clean up your, your lot, your vacant lot, that's. But then after that point, what do we want to do with it? We want, you know? We want to move forward with, with some kind of enforcement with that, or we, you know, do we just let it go as a courtesy?
Mayor, I'd like to chime in if I could. Uh, Almond Cunningham will support you in this, is uh, it's an issue, but I'm, I get, it's a quandary. Uh, I have, I, uh, one I'm thinking about right now, a neighborhood lot. Residential lot. That we, that, that the house was, there was a house on it, the house was basically abandoned, it became a menace, we tore it down. So now we have a vacant lot. Well, now they let the lot just grow up, we cleaned it up probably twice already. It's a vacant lot without a house on it anymore, but it was, it was a residential lot. So when you've got a residential lot in the middle of a bunch of, you know, houses all around it, it's not like it's out some field out in the, in a rural area. It does, you know, you don't want to just let that over, become overgrown, you know, near, because it's near homes, it's in a neighborhood. But I get what you're saying, it's a, it's, we got to figure out how do we address it?
Yeah.
A case by case basis, where we got to make some determination of fact, uh, and we address them one by one or what? So maybe.
We let, we let those lots, if, if nobody's living on those lots, if we do a menace on those lots in the county. Those lots can grow back up to their natural state, so they can turn back into a wooded lot if that, you know, if that's. We don't keep making somebody clean a lot, you know, unless it's trash or debris on the lot, not trees or foliage, that type of thing. We don't make people keep coming back and cleaning that.
I think we're, if we're in a neighborhood, small lots where houses all around, it's reasonable to expect people to keep their property clean. Now, this is a ca- ca- prime example of what you're talking about, Marcus, because these people. They don't, they have no care for this property, I don't even know where they are, I think you had to write, send letters across the country or something, and it's grown up again. And we need to do something, it's Devon Street, right there, it's, the, the neighbors want something done again. So I just, we need to put our heads together, figure out what the answer is, because I agree, we need to do something. Creole Avenue and people out there, you know, there, there, people live right next door to a lot that's completely overgrown. I wish I had the answer, but we, I think we can figure out something.
That, that's a prime example.
Yeah.
We've already done a menace on the, on the property, they're not going to do anything with it. You know, they, they didn't clean it up and we asked them to clean it up, we had to bring it to the board to declare it a menace. We had to pay to, to clean it up, so we're going to do the same thing on the lot now, make them clean the lot up, cut the trees, cut the grass and the vacant lot. It's going to have to come right back, back before you guys for another minutes to do that. And like I said, we have probably twenty-four, twenty-five in mind right now to bring you guys. So what are we going to do, put that at the back, go move it to the front?
Almond Cunningham, what you suggested. Almond Cunningham, what you suggested.
You're talking about the difference between the county and a city neighborhood street. How are we going to ever invite developers and builders to come in and build? When nobody wants to come in those particular areas? At some point, we need to do what's necessary on our part to start at least addressing the issue. So if we're going to grow and get people downtown, I mean, again, I believe in, I support downtown. But if your living room is the only thing clean. And you come to my house and I invite you to eat, the first thing you want to do is go to the bathroom. And if the bathroom is filthy and something else is filthy, nine times out of ten, you're not going to eat. I believe in the living room. But when you start talking about again, the Creole, especially in my area, may not your side of town or your side, may not, but in my side. I have uh, real estate people that are asking me, one of the other things that's going to come up next with enforcement. Okay, I've got McBride and Valerie Robinson that you all are very well acquainted to. How are you going to ever prove to these people that we mean what we say when we have ordinances? On my way here tonight, those horses are still out there and the people are calling me, we're going to took this man to court supposedly and court and court. Same thing with her, I went by there this afternoon, they out there under the tent, camped out, squatting and going on. And so the people wake me up in the morning, what about, I thought y'all was going to do this, I thought you was going to do that. How then do we enforce or when do we enforce what we've?
I agree with you, I'm kind of differences in the county.
I understand.
I'm not saying if you do, you should do what the county does, I'm just telling you that's how we do it.
True.
And if you want lots clean, put it in your ordinance to, to clean it and we'll enforce it, but now we don't have it.
And that's, that's what my discussion was all.
As far as the uh, McBride and the Valerie lady, we had court orders against them. And the court has, you know, put in a judgment that McBride needs to clean up. McBride sat in front of the court, teacher's going to move the horses and then soon as uh, soon as the case is closed, they're going to break him back, he did. So, and you know.
So then there's my question, how then do we enforce? Laws in our ordinances, when are we, or what are we going to do to show these people that we mean business? That you're not going to be able to have horses in the front yard and same thing like with the masons out there on grass and they come out and they cleaned up a little. Black hood and it's been sitting there now.
Same. Been for it. And what I would say is, y'all get on the phone, call your, your city judge, because all, all we can do is put it in front of.
I understand.
You know, and, and we do second both of those four, and she did this last time with the uh, the little lady, the Valerie lady. She gave her fifteen days the first time, she turned right around the second time, gave her another thirty days. So when those thirty days are up. What will, what will happen then, you know, all I can do is put it in front of.
I understand, not, not.
And we, and we do, so I would suggest that you guys call your, your uh, city judge and try to put a little pressure on her, tell her that. This stuff is standing coming up, bringing it to you, but we need some help, you know? Like I, I believe I sent an email to.
You did.
Chapman and copy you guys till she, now push it to the little farm. Hands on another time.
Now we're getting some.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm in favor. I'm, I'm very much in favor and I appreciate your, your recommendation that we send a courtesy letter, but as an administrative costs associated with doing that stuff. So we need to levy, to my opinion, we need to levy some kind of penalty. Fine, something to that effect to, to, to send a message that we want you to clean this property up or, 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 or. Assess this, this been, in the case with McBride, I think he needs to spend the night in jail, it's that simple. That'll change, that, that'll change his attitude about following what, what the judge's orders are, but in the, in the case, Mr. Mayor, I think we, we, we're going to have to. We're going to have to assess some kind of penalty and enforceable penalty. And we have a ju- former judge and attorney that might be able to give us some legal uh, advice as to. What path we might be able to take if, if we.
Sorry, and, and.
Get that.
And, and in 2011 is of course the statute that's dated property or partial land, and I looked at that today. I didn't get a chance to talk to Amy about it. They, but uh, but I will, Morgan, we can visit because if the. I understand the issue with, you know, to warn y'all a little bit, the city judge is, is obviously autonomous in a separate branch of, of government, so. Uh, so we have to be careful about getting hurt in front of her and let her be, be the judge. Uh, but at the same time, uh, when it comes to enforcing what those ordinance are, got a statute. Yeah, that we're following, we follow the ordinance. And if a person continues to not follow the ordinance, then we, you know, you can't have contempt actions against the person. So that's one thing that we could discuss and I'll, since I'm, I'm here a little part time, I'll, I'll give it to Amy and talk to her about that too. About what we can provide the courts guidance on from the education perspective as to what the options are. But you can't have city ordinance where somebody is intentionally, constantly violating that, that ordinance without some type of. But we'll, we'll answer your question, sir. With Amy and we'll get more, we'll talk about that, but this is a broader issue, obviously, that needs to be addressed, every municipality across the state dealing with it. Some form or fashion does.
Mayor, I, I, I do want to add that we, we appreciate Marcus, Mr. Ketchum for, for working with us on all of these cases. And you've been very responsive and, and we appreciate your help on this.
It's frustrating for us to understand, because I mean, you get to a certain point where there's nothing else we can do. And when we get y'all calls from the. Property owners and, you know, we have to tell them the same thing.
Add to Mr. Con- uh, Almond Cunningham's point, if we don't do nothing, they won't do nothing. That's simple, so we got to do something, we got to.
Mayor, I'd, I'd be willing to work with Almond Cunningham and Almond Chapman if maybe we could. Just get together and review neighboring cities ordinances, maybe, maybe some of the solution could be to strengthen our own ordinance, the wording. It's Almond Cunningham, I think he's already suggested, but that would be, have to be done with guidance from legal.
Absolutely.
Uh. You know, there may be something there that we could do, tweak it a little bit to help it, some, help it there, so we just give Marcus some more teeth.
Penalty second in your ordinance, just like anybody would set. Or that's acceptable. So, still we have to take it to the judge, she has to look at the ordinance and say, okay, well, it says here, you're in violation. Now you're in violation, we're going to, you get charged a hundred dollars a day until it's fixed, you know, that's the type of thing. Do, but uh, majority of those, you know, and many a times we take them to court. And we've had any court before and they haven't paid the first fine, so you know, that's the type of thing that you.
And now I'm trying to make up a beat down at, at. That's it?
What, what can you swing?
Okay, uh, thank you, let me just, that's the last item on the, let me just try to put it for our citizens' understanding of. The dilemma that we have. And it's like a, you know, in my own mind, it's like a broken record. And I remind us that really most of these things come down to money. And we don't have no money. But when you say, we say this property is a menace. A house is a menace and we have to tear it down. Last year, we had one hundred thousand dollars in the budget to address those menace houses. This year, we got fifty thousand dollars in that line item. That's why Marcus keeps saying we got twenty-five that we're waiting to tear down. Because we don't have the money to tear them down. Now we want to add grown up lots to that. And yes, I want to go out and move them. But we don't have the money to pay anybody to go move them. So that's where our main problem is. So that's where our main problem is. Then, when you declare a menace and we tear it down, we put it on that tax. How many times can we put it on the tax, Judge? How many times can we charge that menace? We want, I want it. When we tear a house down, ladies and gentlemen, we put it on that tax roll. So if they ever sell that property, we get our money back. But how many, now we tear the house down, not a lot growing up. We go back and mow the lot. We put that on that, on the league. How many times can we do that? So we got to mow that lot four or five times because it keeps growing up. So every time it grew up, do we go mow it? And we add that to the tax? How many times can we do that, Judge? Can we do it the minute time we?
You have to go through, and I'll look at that statute, you have to go through that process.
Yeah.
There is a, there, in your municipal league, I know y'all have the MML manuals. There's a, there's a cleaning technical brief in there, cleaning private property. It talks about this process in a summary fashion. But when you, when you have to go in and clean it up, it talks about collecting cost to clean up, expedited procedure. In some cases, you can have an expedited procedure. But it also points out cleanup can be lengthy. And if you have to go back after a certain time, you got to go through the same process again.
That's right.
And so, and so understand that that's something that may have to do. I don't know if the county is going to repeat offenders, but. Actually, you can talk about someone paying the tax to get your money back. A lot of times, and what we found in the county, where we assess things like that, this money property. If they don't pay him, of course, they go to the tax sale. When somebody sees that they, they have this huge debt on the tax sale, they won't pay for that. They'll get forfeited to the Secretary of State's office, and then nobody gets a period. So.
So all I'm trying to do is get our citizen, our board to understand that the limit we in is that we can declare these houses or property a menace, and we write a letter to the people encouraging them to clean it up. And they don't do it. Then after thirty days, we say, go tear it down. And we do that, and we run out of money. And every year, we do the same thing. We add a hundred thousand dollars in a fifth thousand dollar this year, and we keep doing that. Way to fix it is try to encourage our people to take care of their own property. But that's, that's what they ought to be doing. And that's what I'm trying to do, is encourage our people to clean up their own property. Because the city should not be in the business of cleaning up private property, tearing down private dwellings. We shouldn't be in that business. But that's where we are. But it's all over the state. The state is trying to come up with legislation that would help us. It's all over the city. It's all over the country, not just in Moss Point. It's all over our state and municipality. When I go to mayor's meeting, all the mayors got these same problems. So we're not the only one, but I know ours is bad because it's been leaning so long. But ladies and gentlemen, our problem is that we don't have any money to even tear down the ones that we got on our list now. You know, we're going to add laws to that. Like Marcus said, do we move it to the top of the list? Or do we move it to the, where do we put it on that list? So it is a problem that we have to figure out how to deal with it. But don't forget, it's really about money. But if we have the money, we can go out and clean the whole of it, and just wait until we get the return on it.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll sit here.
Take it.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.